I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a minute, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thelma Ulrich, she was just our local treasurer, which I'm so glad we were able to do that, passed away, and her memorial is served this Friday and Saturday, so if we could have a moment of silence, please.
Bunton?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Raker?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse both Commissioner Blash and Commissioner Campbell.
Some of.
Second.
Oh. There you go. Roll call. Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, and commissions and reports, do we have any?
There are two meetings to announce. The Planning Commission will meet on Tuesday, April 7th, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall, and the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting that was scheduled for April 7th has been canceled.
Okay, adoption of the agenda?
Mayor, I need to amend the agenda, removing item 10A and making it 9F, and I move to approve as amended.
Second.
Roll call. Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
No.
Dempsey?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, public participation, this is the time that you may address this body, all we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three minutes, please.
Good evening, Dolores Kusiniak, 250 Euclid. I have two inquiries I've been waiting for answers. First of all, 230 North Avenue, it's still being used, I guess, as a, I don't know what you call it, a halfway house babysitting services or what, but first of all, does he have a permit to do this? Is he licensed for this? I've made a few phone calls to Mr., I can't think of his name right now, but he has returned phone calls. Also, 263 Euclid, I understand this house is a rental, they are using it for a halfway house, which means they're collecting money from the state, to me that's running the business, and they have predators living in the house, which I'm against, and also I want to know, do they have a permit? Are they licensed? And when can I get an answer for both of these questions? And on the pleasant side, April 11th, this Saturday, we're going to be doing Grashit cleanup, we're going to start at Canfield until Marketplace, and we still would like to have volunteers, it doesn't take long, it's about an hour, hour and a half, about an hour, we're done. I mean, you can get out there, I get out and I walk, and there's nothing to, you walk, you walk with your friend, you talk, by the time you know you're done with it. So, we'd like to have all the help we can, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Good evening, Andy Kent, 14 Woolworth Court, just wanted to speak once again on behalf of Kendrick area Neighborhood Watch, and Dolores kind of touched on this already, this coming Saturday, 9 o'clock to 10:30 is our Grashit cleanup, we do this three times a year, and we have a section of Grashit as it runs into Mount Clemens from the north and exiting Mount Clemens from the south, up on the north end. So once again, I'd like to invite anyone here and anyone watching at home, if they wish to come out and assist us with that, we would greatly appreciate it, you can even get to wear a very stylish neon vest, so unfortunately you can't keep it, but thank you very much, once again, Andy Kent, 14 Woolworth Court, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mr. Siplin, I live at 14, I used to live at 14 Grashit Court, now I live on Casman Street in Clinton Township, which is 22534. I am up here because of my house that I used to live in at 14 Grashit Court, which I own, because in 2014, I had to go over there three times to clean my basement, especially August the 12th, I spent five hours over there cleaning my basement, and I do have pictures, I can show them to you if you would like to see them, I brought them along just in case you'd like to see them. I was over there in March the 9th taking pictures because the whole street of Grashit Court and Bohemys at the intersection of Grashit and Bohemys was covered with water. If you see those pictures, you'll probably see the cars driving through the water. This should not be happening, this really should not be happening at all, but it keeps happening, and this is 2015, and we're going to be paying $250 more taxes, and we have to put up with the flooding? This is just the third month of the year, we got nine more months to go, really this is the fourth month of the year, we got eight more months to go, and we got rain coming in May, especially in May, it seems to rain all the time in May, July and August, and this should not be happening, we should not have water standing across the road, not like that, that's really bad, and this is because of ice and snow, not because of rain. And this, something has to happen, it can't keep going on like this, and these people, these senior citizens that mostly live in that area, that I know, that own their own homes, keep paying taxes, taxes going up $250 more this year, that's going to affect their medicine, because they probably have to go from brand name to generic, food's going to change for them, they got to save money up for taxes, like I said before, this should not be happening, take a look at the pictures, read my letter, I'm not going to read this because it's the same thing I gave you, and I've been up here before, this is my seventh time, and this is my first time this year, 2015, and I will be coming back and keep coming back and keep coming back, you're going to get tired of looking at me, but I'm going to keep repeating this until the problem is fixed, and it's not a homeowner's problem, it is a city's problem, put them per McComb Commission of Roads, per wastewater service, it's the jurisdiction of the DPW, the mayor should have got a letter, because he said he was going to send it to the mayor, we'll see what happens, but this should not be happening, not in this day and time and age, things should not be like this, you shouldn't have your water, your streets covered with water, because of ice and snow, even because of rain, it just shouldn't be happening.
Who's the letter coming from, McComb? McComb, the letter, I haven't received anything, no, no, I haven't received anything, you said I'm getting a letter from?
They were supposed to go to the mayor.
Oh, okay.
City manager.
Oh, okay, city manager, all right, we'll check into that.
Laura Fournier, 70 Lodwick Street, Mount Clemens, you're probably tired of hearing from me as well, so I understand this lady's frustration, but I read the prepared text or remarks that Steve Brown put out there that I'm sure we'll hear about in a couple minutes, there was nothing in there about the sidewalks, I was very, very disappointed to see that, now he did address the snow issues, but that's, pardon the sarcasm, but that's a little convenient when the snow's done, hopefully for this year, but the sidewalks is very real, here's a letter that the interim city manager sent me last July, saying that by the fall, these sidewalks would be inspected, et cetera, et cetera, you all got a copy of that letter when it went out, nothing has been done, there's still no program, there's still no nothing, and last year, when I started coming to these meetings, it was May, and they told me that it was kind of late in the year to get started on a sidewalk program, so frustration is just huge right now, and either, you know, if we were to spend $50,000 to update our city plan and do all kinds of cool things like that, how about just addressing the real problems that we have, these sidewalks are a real problem, and the other thing is that Roth and Deng store, now I understand that there was asbestos in that building, and that building came down without an inspection for that asbestos, and there's a technical word for it, but basically freeborn in the air now, because they took that building down without the proper inspections and the abatement, and there it sits, kids crawling over the cement, no fence, just sits there, how many safety violations and ordinance violations do we have to have in the city, or maybe it just takes someone getting hurt before we do something?
Thank you, anyone else?
Michelle Weiss, 18200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township, I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Business Group and the DDA, we'd like to invite the residents downtown this Saturday, April 11th, we are going to have a Resident Appreciation Day to launch our Resident Appreciation Key Giveaway, we are going to be giving a key to the city to the residents to unlock discounts and offerings throughout the entire year, all they have to do is come in and show their driver's license and proof of residency to get a key to the city, and then throughout the year, they can stop by any of the businesses that would have a sticker on their window like this, that lets them know that they are a participating business, the specials and offerings will change throughout the year, so it'll never quite be the same, any special events that we have, anything that goes on, the residents would have priority to tickets or anything that would have to do with standing in a line or having to pay for something, they would have a free ride with us, so we hope that after they get done doing the cleanup for the Kendrick Neighborhood Watch, that they can come into town, they'll be serving refreshments, giving the residents an opportunity to meet and greet with the business owners, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to call our office, if you notice, when you drive by the river sign, we have it posted up there for this week, so please come down and enjoy your downtown, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings, I have several here, one, street cleaning, street cleaning activities will soon begin for 2015, the exact start date is going to be determined on the weather, two, the noise issue, the car stereos, this is an issue that's been raised within the city administration, and we have reached out to the sheriff, as this is an enforcement issue for them, this issue can be difficult to enforce in terms of catching violators in the act, the best course of action is to contact the sheriff's substation, 586-469-5151, and provide as much information as possible, including the habits and schedule, when and where the person's creating the noise, yeah, the noise nuisance tends to create the problem, helpful information, you know, kind of car, license plate, color, time of day when this has occurred. Cass Avenue demolition, the city issued a court summons to require property fence, proper fencing of this demolition location, the court date is unknown at this time, other jurisdictions have raised issues with the demolition process itself, so there are multiple issues that are being pursued on this demolition. DTE issue, regarding issues with the non-functioning streetlights, residents can report this issue to DTE by calling 800-477-4747, or by submitting a form on the DTE website, which is WW, we'll put it out there, you don't need to hear that, we're going to have it out there, right? The DTE website, it's going to be out there, thank you, and it'll be on our webpage also. Ordinance enforcement, snow removal issue just brought up, city administration is evaluating the idea of revisiting the use of city contractors to clear properties in violation of our snow removal requirements, our prior experience with this process went poorly, but it, but it did coincide with issues related to widespread foreclosures, we will likely bring this forth to the mayor in admission for discussion in the future, so as to allow time to take the necessary actions to implement this, if there's interest in it. And 230 North Avenue, daycare, city administration has been in contact with this property about various concerns, and the owner and the operator has been responsive to issues we have raised, this includes a smoking issue that was raised at the prior commission meeting, if a resident has concerns relating to loitering, we suggest you contact the sheriff's office, and that's it. Yes?
Just a clarification, that number for the sheriff department in both item number two and item number six, that's not the substation number, that is the general information number for the sheriff department on Elizabeth Road, just as a point of interest, and I'll have to tell you, I walked by North Avenue, and they're not smoking in the back by the fence anymore, all of the chairs are up in front of the building, so they have responded to the city's prompting.
Commissioner Raker?
In regards to the streetlight issue, I believe Mr. Ford had brought that up, was you ask to see if that light had been fixed?
I didn't hear.
Mr. Ford, he had a, okay, so they're at least addressing the issue, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, approve of the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the March 16th, March 23rd, and March 30th meetings.
Support.
Roll call.
Oh.
Oh, you have a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I noted that the March 23rd and the March 30th meetings did not include the department heads as attendees, is that a intention? Okay, I know Patrick Lindberry, Marilyn Delugey, Brian Tingling, and Jeff Woods were at the 23rd and on the 30th, Patrick and Marilyn and Brian.
And Lisa was a both.
And Lisa, I thought she was listed, but if not, she should be.
So with that correction?
So, you want me to make the motion over, make it, approve the minutes as corrected?
Right. Second.
Roll call.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, general business, 9A, introduction and first reading of the Consumer Energy Company gas franchise ordinance, in 1985, the city commission approved the Consumer Energy Gas Franchise Ordinance, this ordinance is due to expire in June of 2015, Consumer Energy is once again requesting that the city approve the ordinance to allow for a revocable franchise to permit Consumer Energy Company to provide natural gas services in the city of Mount Clemens for a period of 30 years, pursuant to the city charter 10.228, Section 165, the proposed ordinance must be reviewed by the city commission and shall not be enacted unless it has been completed in the form in which it is finally enacted, and has been on file in the office of the city clerk for public inspection, and held for public inspection for four weeks before publication, the city attorney has reviewed the proposed ordinance and finds it acceptable, and has confirmed that it complies with the city's public utility ordinance, need a motion.
Move to approve the introduction and first reading of the proposed ordinance as to the content, to direct the city clerk to publish a notice indicating that the document is on display for a four-week period, and to set the second reading and adoption for May 18th, 2015.
Second.
Okay, since I already read it, are there any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Mensah?
I see Jeff's not here, but maybe Mr. Murray can answer this, I just had some concern about the 30-year period, because when I go through all this paper that's, you know, included here, we go way back into ordinance number 25 dot three, or .300, it doesn't say anything about a 30-year period, when I go to 25 point 301, it doesn't say anything about a 30-year period, but the ordinance, you know, immediately following this, on page 14, says 30 years, and then the very next section under repealer, you know, I'm just looking at the date, it says June 17th, 1985, I'm just wondering why we would want to do this for 30 years?
Because the ordinance that this is amending provides in Section 10.228, "Public utility franchises and all renewals and extensions thereof and amendments thereto shall be granted by ordinance only, no exclusive franchise shall ever be granted, no franchise shall be granted for a longer period than 30 years." The prior one was 30 years, this one that's being proposed is 30 years, but they're not exclusive franchises, you know, you could have, what's the other gas company?
Direct, I think it's direct.
Yeah, they would be entitled to the same consideration.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Raker?
Did I see correctly that on the, the contract could be broken with a 90-day written notice by either party?
Yeah.
We do have someone here from consumers, if you have any questions directly, Ursula Warren, is that her last name? Yes, Ursula Warren.
No.
Okay, roll call.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Okay, 9B, to adopt a resolution supporting a charitable gaming license for the McComb Children's Hands-on Museum, I need a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution in support of a charitable gaming license for the McComb Children's Hands-on Museum, a Michigan nonprofit corporation.
Support.
The McComb Children's Hands-on Museum is a Michigan nonprofit corporation with its mailing address in the city of Mount Clemens, and is organized for the purpose of receiving and administering funds and plans to create a McComb Children's Hands-on Museum, this museum will be filled with hands-on exhibits, activities, and programming for children and families based upon the science, technology, engineering, and math disciplines, initial plans will include topics such as advanced manufacturing, aeronautics, agriculture, and developing health lifestyles and natural resources, in order to raise money for the museum, the corporation is applying for a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan to hold a raffle at the 2015 McComb Children's Hands-on Museum Indigo Night Evening Event that will be held at Metropolitan Beach on May 16th, 2015, as part of the application process, the state is requesting that a resolution is passed by the local governing stating, government stating that the organization is a recognized nonprofit organization in the community, the city attorney has reviewed the information submitted by the corporation, including its bylaws, questions?
Just a point of clarification, there was some information that came out that said that the Hands-on Museum was thinking of relocating to Warren, has that issue been laid to rest, or?
As far as I know, not yet, I think they're still pursuing locations, as far as I know.
But there's been no definite decision?
There's been no definite decision, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, because, yeah, originally I thought the intent was to be in Mount Clemens, and I certainly hope they stay in Mount Clemens.
Anyone else? Commissioner Mensah?
Mr. Murray, if they locate to relocate or locate this museum in Warren, what will that do to the gaming license that, you know, that we just approved, or not approved, but, you know, said was organized in the Mount Clemens?
Probably nothing.
Probably nothing.
The act says that, and by the way, their registered office is Mount Clemens, this nonprofit corporation, their registered office is in Mount Clemens, the act to get a gaming license indicates that they should go to the local government in which the organization conducts its principal activities, so the question would be, the registered office usually is an indication of your principal activities, but if they went to Warren, I think you could revisit it if you wanted to.
Do you know offhand, would the gaming license then be, like, transferable from Mount Clemens?
Oh, I'm sure they'd go to Warren and just request it to be recognized there.
Okay.
It's only for one event, and that event is in May, that's the only, you know, time that this is good for, and they will not have any decision at that point in time where they're going to go. Anyone else?
Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Okay, we are on 9C, commission approval of a resolution supporting the participation of the Mount Clemens eligible children to a Head Start program, need a motion?
Move to approve a resolution in support of increasing the participation of eligible children residing in the city of Mount Clemens in Head Start programs.
Second.
Okay, the city of Mount Clemens, mayor and the city commission is requesting to adopt a resolution supporting efforts to increase the participation of eligible residents' children in the Head Start program. Questions, comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Raker? Oh, Commissioner Hill?
I just had, my comment is that early childhood education is more and more being considered extremely important, and so I think it's important to support this.
Yes, before this meeting, I spoke with the presenter, Mr. Greg Murray, and I'm happy that we have moved very fast to get a resolution, I spoke with him about the content of the resolution, and I explained to him that we just have the mayor representing the commission, and he explained that the spirit is to show the commitment of the entire commission, and then I told him, I said, it's the intent, I would like to be able to approve this tonight, and then collect the signatures between now and the next meeting, and he indicated that that would be ideal, and that there would be no issue as far as the timeframe is concerned, so I would like to make a subtle amendment and ask that the clerk please include all of our signatures on this resolution. Could you support that amendment, please?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you.
The resolution says, "We have resolved that the mayor and city commission of the city of Mount Clemens support any efforts," et cetera, we normally, resolutions are signed by the mayor and the clerk, not by the entire commission.
We've signed testimonial resolutions before, haven't we, for recognizing people?
No, it's the mayor and clerk sign them.
So what is that that we have signed in the past, where all of us are, where Lisa's collected signatures on our behalf, have those not been proclamations? Okay, all right, I'll.
You withdraw?
I will withdraw, then.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, 9D, adopt a resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to replace the Crocker Boulevard Bridge, need a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program for the Crocker Boulevard Bridge replacement.
Support.
Okay, city staff is seeking approval to submit an application for grant funds in the amount of $5,220,000 to the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program, the purpose of the grant is to obtain funding for the replacement of the deteriorating Crocker Boulevard Bridge, the program requires that the city commission adopt a resolution supporting this grant as part of the application. Questions, comments? Commissioner Bunton?
I'd just like to thank Jeff Woods for his detailed work on this, I, after reading this, this was quite an undertaking on his behalf, and it's quite comprehensive, and I'd just like to let it be known that Jeff Wood did an outstanding job with this particular proposal, and to get that much money coming into the city is a blessing.
We hope.
We hope.
He's not here.
Commissioner Metzer?
You know, and he did do a very thorough job, and I went, I read the page that talks about the economic importance, and I read the second paragraph about the routing of the traffic, and so, you know, I had some concerns about that because it does extend, you know, emergency response times. So of course I went over and talked to, you know, some people at the fire department, some of the firefighters, and they suggested that instead of routing the traffic onto First Street, because it's very congested on First Street because of the parking that goes on here, it's sometimes difficult for them to, you know, get the truck, you know, the ladder truck down there, that we actually kind of alter that from First Street and route traffic to Avery and up Avery to Dickinson. We don't want the traffic going through the neighborhoods on Second Street or Third Street or Fourth Street or Fifth Street or anything, but I don't, you know, I kind of concurred with them that it would be a nightmare, I think, to route all of that traffic right here in front of City Hall, in front of the, you know, all of these businesses and in front of the fire station, especially when you consider the fact that we're cutting off one of their routes. We don't need to make it more difficult for them by routing traffic through there.
Commissioner Bunton?
Isn't that something that Jeff Wood and the people will work out for the best traffic direction at that point? I think that our approval of the grant application is not gonna be hesitant or be controlled by that issue. I think that issue is just gonna be a mute issue and that they can resolve that in a future date. This is not finalized, it's not even been granted at this point, so I think that this issue can be taken up later.
Well, you know, there's a whole package here, and I'm responding to the entire package. So that is something that, you know, can be clarified at a further date. I agree with you on that, but I think it needs to be mentioned at this point. And from, I talked to one of the captains, and nobody from the city or Jeff talked to the firemen about route difficulties. I just wanna make sure that we do the best thing for the residents and lessen any kind of emergency response time by eliminating congestion on that street, so.
I think that when and if we get this grant, I'm sure that that's going to be, there's gonna be quite a bit of discussion between, and administration and between the departments, but right now it's presumptuous of us to think that we're gonna even get the grant. This is, I think, the fifth or sixth time we've applied for this grant, so hopefully it'll go this time, go through, but I'm sure all those details will definitely be worked out once the grant is received, which we keep our fingers crossed.
Commissioner Rager?
Don't we have to vote on acceptance of a grant? If we were to receive it, we would have to formally receive it, and then at that point in time, I think we can definitely.
We're just right now approving the submission of the grant at this point.
I'd support you on it then. I'd support you on it now, but.
Okay. Any other?
No, I'm good.
I just wanted to comment that I thought the pictures that he included were very effective and hopefully convinced them that we really need this grant. Absolutely.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Metzer?
Yes.
Rager?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay, approval, purchase of payments and invoices. Need a motion?
I move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Oh, I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. There, on this one item for Leslie Electric, the amount is twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents, and the current balance is three thousand, and it said there would be a budget adjustment later. I guess I was just curious about where the money will come for the budget adjustment.
I think Marilyn could probably address that.
Well, the major street also has a fund balance, and so if they're all purchased in this year, I will have the amendments in May. Usually the first meeting in June is where we do the amendments.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and we bring it to the commission for everybody's.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Metzer?
Yes.
Rager?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, nine F, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Move to approve appointments to boards, commissions, and committees as presented.
Support.
Okay.
Okay, this is my, this is my thing. I just wanna point out that this process is not as good as it could and should be. The Building Code Enforcement Appeals Board, I believe, that did not have a promotion advertisement on the web, and neither did the DDA, so, and all of these are reappointments, which I wanna thank everybody for their commitment to volunteering, but if we're not making all the appointments available to everybody, then that's not as transparent as we could be. So those are my comments.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Rager?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Metzer?
Yes.
Okay, city managers' report. Oh, no, consent agenda, I'm sorry. Need a motion on the remaining of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, as amended. Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Metzer?
Yes.
Rager?
Yes.
Okay, the city managers' report. First, mass transit evaluation process for Macomb County. City administration recently had a meeting with planning consultants and the regional transit authority director. During the meeting, an upcoming plans for city and public interaction on mass transit was discussed. The initial meeting is tentatively planned for April twenty-second, twenty-fifteen, with full details yet to be determined. Further information will be provided as soon as it's available. Free spading and neutering. There's a grant funding available to assist Mount Clemens residents for free spading and neutering of pets. This funding is being administered through the Macomb County Animal Shelter. Anyone interested in learning more about this can contact the shelter at five eight six four six nine five one one five. Interested residents should make the call as soon as possible as the funding is available on the first-come, first-served basis. It was also in the Clementine newsletters, all the information is there about that. The latest April, May, and June edition of the city newsletter, the Clementine, has gone to press. Residents should check it out for important information on city, school district, and organizations like the Anton Art Center and the Crocker House Museum. The newsletter will be delivered to all homes in the city and is available, is also available for viewing on our website. And that is it. Any questions on the city managers' report? Okay. City commissioner report, comments. Commissioner Hill? I guess even though it's reported that the, it's been settled in court about the building, the former Roth and Deng Building on KS Avenue, that place is, as Mrs. Fournier said, an accident waiting to happen. It really is. There's no fencing up there anymore. There's all this rubble laying around. I think it's a dangerous situation, and it really does demand attention. I think that the strategic planning sessions that we've had have been productive, and I am looking forward to the final result. And, oh, yes, we, the commission received a memo from the city attorney about an ordinance we had considered in the past dealing with those papers and things that are thrown around, and I think that it would be wise for us to revisit that because it really is a nuisance in the city. That's my comments for tonight. Thank you, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Rager?
I will segue right off your last statement there, and I totally agree, and this has been going on far too long. If you walk around the city after the snow is gone, there are sometimes over a dozen papers sitting in front of one residence, or in the street, or on the sidewalk, or on the easement, and it's an eyesore, to say the least. So I will double down on that request, please. Residents, I am not gonna get tired of seeing you here or come to the microphone, that's what we're here for. So I'm listening, and I will continue to listen and continue to advocate for your concerns. I'm a little disappointed that, as I previously mentioned, when we're absent the city manager, that it's a great opportunity for one of our department heads to sit in. It's a great learning opportunity, and also it's not just a learning opportunity, it's a growth opportunity, it's a leadership opportunity, a management opportunity, and for us to not facilitate a department head to sit in the absence of a city manager, I think we're not doing the best we can for our employees. From our strategic planning sessions, we did, so far we've tentatively established five priorities. They have not been approved. They're going to be hopefully approved sometime in May. They center around the following: neighborhoods, the potential for reinvigorating the mineral bath industry, reinventing the downtown, marketing our strengths, and potentially developing the riverfront. Now, these are just priorities. It's not to say that they're gonna happen or not, but that is where we, as a commission, have basically through a series of exercises determined where our energies and interests will go in the next year. So hopefully that will be presented and approved in May. On behalf of Mrs. Siplin of Gresham Court, I wanna ask the administration if there, when there is standing water, is it possible that we can, and I'm not expecting obviously an answer right now, but for the record, where we could potentially respond to an emergency where that water could be pumped out to a non-combined sewage overflow so that it, we mitigate the situation? And also, I think it may not necessarily bear any fruit, but I think definitely it's something for us to consider as far as the drafting of a resolution in support to our state and federal representatives requesting, we need some relief for that neighborhood specific to that. I mean, short of not doing that, then we're not doing everything we can. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Metzer?
April is National Volunteer Month for the American Red Cross. There's a blood drive tomorrow, April seventh, at the Mount Clemens Public Library from eleven to four forty-five. There's one Sunday, the twelfth, at St. Peter Catholic Church from eight AM to one forty-five. You can call the Red Cross for an appointment, or you can go online to redcrossblood.org. The Macomb County Association of School Administrators and the Macomb County Association of Curriculum Administrators, for over twenty-nine years, has honored teachers nominated by their local districts. Michigan Supreme Court Justice David Viviano is gonna be present to honor the winners of these, this award on April sixteenth at the Macomb Intermediate School District. The honorees from the Mount Clemens Public Schools are Allison Vogts from Seminole Academy, Michelle Kirkland for the junior high, and Maureen Kuzenza for the high school. Just wanna say congratulations, ladies, for bringing pride and honor to our school system and for creating opportunities for academic success to our students. The first-ever Motor City Pizza Fest is gonna take place Wednesday, the eighth, at the Gibraltar Trade Center from six to ten. It's gonna feature twelve of our area's best pizza places. It's gonna have live music, beer and wine, children's activities, and shopping. A portion of the proceeds will go to the local operation of Sandwiches Save Lives, benefiting the homeless. Tickets are ten bucks for adults, eight bucks for kids. You can call two four eight eight oh nine nine six four four for more information. That will help our homeless here in this city. So I wanna reiterate, please take advantage of the free spay and neuter program. These services can cost up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, but the Macomb County Animal Shelter and the organization All About Animals are doing this for free. So contact the animal shelter for more information and do it soon so that you make sure that, you know, you're one of the ones who gets serviced. There has been some conversation, both pro and con, that I like to list the businesses in town that I utilize and that I visit. I think it is a commissioner, it's partly my responsibility to be a cheerleader for the city and for the businesses, right? It's my responsibility to promote the city to the best of my ability as often and frequently and as positively as I can. So I'm gonna tell you now where I've been for the last month. I've been several times to Bass City Bistro, I've been to Tapacos, I've been to Orleans, I've been several times to the Mount Clemens Grill. I've been to Three Blind Mice, I went to the Mount Clemens Lock and Key Shop and had some keys made. I went to the Paperback Writer Bookstore and Weirdville Records, and I actually bought three books there. I went to Pollyanna's Antiques and Collectibles on North Avenue. Pollyanna's is run by Polly Howser and her sister. It's a really great little, you know, antique collectible shop. Be careful moving around in there 'cause it is packed to the gills. And my nemesis, my downfall, Champagne Chocolates. I have been to Champagne Chocolates yet again and bought coconut haystacks with jelly beans, two of them, only two. So those are my comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
Okay, I guess first I'd like to state that I hope everybody had a happy Easter and a happy Passover. Hope your day was delightful. One of the problems we have in the city is infrastructure, and the way to address that is that we have to, as Jeff Wood has put together, get money into the city to address infrastructure. The flooding, our sewers, our drainage is aged old, and it just needs to be redone, and eventually we'll have to do that. But at this point in time, it just isn't possible to do all of the things that we need to do for the infrastructure. I'm glad that the bridge is gonna get fixed so that there's gonna be more than one egress going east from the city. We have three different things going on right now to help improve the city, one of which is the strategic planning sessions that we have attended. The other is readdressing the master plan and hopefully creating a master plan that will be used. And thirdly, we have a redevelopment-ready community program that's underway at this time, which will be able to do some of the things that would be addressed in the strategic planning as well as the master plan. Roseville put their RRC or redevelopment-ready community together, and the fitness, what is it, on Thirteen Mile and Gresham, they have a fitness center there that the RRC people promoted and got for them, helped them to create that. That's the kind of development, that's the kind of business that we like to bring into the city by having this redevelopment-ready community certification so that these people come in and help us, as well as the wonderful things that our director is doing for the city. So I think those things need to be brought into view as well. I'd like to just say, go Tigers. They won their first game today, so that's a big thing. I'd love to say, go Spartans, but they just didn't make it, so next year maybe. I'd like to say, come on, spring weather. I'm a little tired of the twenties and thirties and what have you. Love to see that come about. And with that, I'll just give you a commissioner wisdom which came from a fortune cookie. It says, "If you talk, you merely repeat what you already know, but if you are quiet and listen, you may learn something you didn't know." And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you.
Just wanted to remind the public, we will be starting our budget meetings. First one's this coming Monday, or next Monday, I should say, the eighth, or what's the date? Thirteenth? And then the following Monday. So three Mondays, right? The next three Mondays in a row, we'll be having our budget meetings. So they will start at seven. Okay, don't know.
They're all different times.
All different times. Anyway, we'll have it out on the website, it'll be posted downstairs. Encourage people to come to see the process. You have, you'll have an opportunity to see your commissioners and the mayor and the department heads at work trying to figure out the budget for the city, and we encourage you to please come and sit in. It's important to see the process because it does take a lot of It's important to see the process because it does take a lot of time, energy, we have a, the book is way, way, I don't even know how big it is, it's about this big, that everybody should be going through, the budgets, and this way it gives you a better idea to the public on, you know, what we do and what we arrive at, at the end of the sessions, so please come, they're held here upstairs in the conference room. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please. Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mencer?
Yes.
Rager?
Yes.
Bunton?